Okay, Ms. Thomasina, sorry, Thomasina Tracy?
Yeah, I'm present.
Thank you very much. Twilight, Manson. Okay, Marsha Gray Eyes.
Here.
Thank you. Robert Black. Roland Small Canyon.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, myself, I am present. Larita, you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Priscilla Benali. Jim Sajini. I think I'm missing one. Am I missing one?
I believe we have a pro temp on the line from NASTAS.
I'm hold my, Willie Gray Eyes.
Okay, pro temp.
I think Robert fell off too. He's not. I don't see him in the list.
Okay. Okay, Chair, so we're counting, uh, NASTAS on pro temp. Is that Willis, is he the president, vice president, or secretary?
Uh, Shuna, what's your pro temp position at NASTAS on chapter? Mr. Willie Gray Eyes.
He's the president.
Okay. Okay.
G R A Y.
G R A Y, okay. Okay, uh, with that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And Robert, are you back? Are you back?
Have some coffee, Dillard. What's going on?
I'm looking for. Is Robert?
Hello.
Oh, there he is. All right.
No.
All right. It's too early for me. All right. With that, Chair, we have nine total.
All righty. Nine official presidents that constitute a quorum. Thank you, Shunatani. Uh, before we start, Shata, I, I don't believe this, it ever have happened before with this, um, recent election, yeah? And there's several, um, uh, people that ran for office, but they got, um, they didn't make it for simply returning their, um, their expense reports. Although, uh, do we need to go back to our plan of operation and, uh, modify as such? To, for quorum purposes? Harada, Honado, Nishashen, maybe the next election or? Anyhow, something to think about, uh, due that we, we have a quorum now, and next item on the agenda is, um, number three invocation. Any volunteers from the audience? Shata, Mr. Willis Begay. He get the name, Kona, Kuei. Elahitleh, Nde Kona, Nadasan, Ojetkwa, Kanto, Zapiqin.
To D E D. They already selected an operator when they picked Medallion. And it's it's kind of a mess. Long story short, we've been trying to negotiate with Medallion to sign an E O A, but he stopped talking to us. And a lot of the reason is because we believe that D E D has been stepping in to do their own negotiation with him at some level, even though they don't have the business site leasing authority for Shanto. In in that case, they're um overstepping their their bounds and stepping into, I guess, stepping over the line. And that's really where this is sitting at. Previously, for the C store, we didn't have. Um. I guess we didn't have a business manager in place. It was the chapter manager that also signed off on the business site lease or the contract itself. Um, so it we do have a history of using the business manager or the biz as I guess the chapter manager as the business manager as well. So that is, I guess, in a nutshell, but I'm gonna turn it over to Robert. Uh, the V P. He's got a little bit more information than I do. If that's okay with you, Chair.
Yes, Miss, uh, Madam President, uh, Mr. Black, you have the floor. Mister Vice President. Are you on the line?
Okay, he's talking away. Good morning, Chair. And actually, my my chair, um. We don't have a vice chair, right? Sorry. Um, I don't know, our secretary. Good morning, everyone. Uh, excuse my voice. I I got the frog's voice this morning, so. Um, it may not sound like me, but it's me. Um. I appreciate, uh, NOS Council taking on this, uh, resolution for, uh, supporting our business site leasing authority. Uh. I also appreciate, um, my my sister, Shade, Marsha, for, uh, really being, uh, in the forefront to, um, stand for what we believe is, um, uh, the fair and just, uh, process and lease that we want to end up with in terms of, um, this lease fees. I don't know, based on our involvement with, um, or with assistance of the Department of Justice, um, we've also, um, uh, come to be aware of different things that weren't really taken care of that we should have been. And I think, um, that only kind of reinforces our position that, um, I don't think they really had their ducks lined up when they made the, um, decision to start saying that we need to revoke the business site leasing authority, so. But, uh, in the end, with my position, A, um, the lease fees, I think were, um, not adequate in terms of, um, how much the operator is going to be taking in for, uh, I guess, at least on the profit side. And then how much he's going to be, uh, paying to Shanto, which is very minimal. So I think, um, with that in mind, I think that's why we were of the position on how much we were asking for in terms of, um, each month's lease fee to S E G. Previously, A, our attempt was to do sublease, and that one is kind of put on hold right now. I think our focus now is to get the emergency operating agreement in place and sign as soon as we can. And primarily with, um, the division director, uh, bringing the, um, selector operator to the table with, um, I guess, on our on our side, A, with, um, D O J, and I guess what we want is D E D to be sitting on our side of the table, because this is an entity that's coming in from outside to do business on the nation. So even in our A, I think, um, I don't, I don't right now, A, we are with, um, uh, the Mister Tony Perry's, um, department. For we just wanted to, um, make sure that the leasing authority stays with Shanto, because, um, um, we should want to leave revocation that you need or that you know still. I mean, I think this is something that, um, we know is is a process that that we were undertaking or undertook previously, and now today, um, we're, uh, I guess, in a little little bit of a, uh, um, awkward situation where um, D E D is getting involved from the outside, trying to push a lease. And of course, and on on our N A, we've been forthcoming in terms of providing the business site lease, um, application, or even when we went down down to the emergency operating agreement, we were willing to come to the table, but, uh, there was no response from the operator. And apparently, right now, A, he was already in negotiations with the D to process the lease from the business site, uh, from the Division Economic, uh, Programming and Project Development out. So right now, I think we believe that, um, any type of a local authority or a local decision-making capacity that's given to the local governments should be something that's kept and nurtured and and even with the assistance of all the divisions within Navo Nation, they should be helping out. A, uh, in a lot of cases, two-staff operation. For right now, A, um, bank you can't, you don't have a manager full-time for the business management office. But I mean, I think it's clearly seen that if that was the case, then they should be funding it, and they're providing funds to operate their office, but they're not going to do that. So a lot of what we need to do will come from beings collected from the hotel operations or future business site development to have the staff fully on board, whether it's, um, manning an office or whether it's manning it part-time. So and I think, um, without really informing us on what they were gonna do. Coito, um, uh, Kegu, um, Ozi, that you know, so, uh, all that, so. So with this resolution, it supports our position that the, um, any type of, uh, local capacity or local authority given to a local government should be something that's nurtured and, um, uh, to help out each chapter to get, um, the technical technical assistance they need to get what they need done. Instead of just being critical and saying that, well, they're not, they don't have the capacity, let's get that authority back to them, they're not going to do it from here. She look, and I don't, um, that's, with the situation. Uh, it's not revoked that you live on, so. Because, I mean, it's not only what set, um, a lot of things um, in play in terms of creating precedents for local chapter governance, especially like Western Skotchen House and Kieta and Tanaalia and typical state or the chapter, they're all government certified, it's far away though. And we're in the midst of, uh, the area where we have, uh, a potential to be able to create a lot of businesses and then having that under the auspices of the local governments, but good, then I mean, we we have a way to sustain ourselves so that we don't have to look to wind up all the time, so. I apologize if I'm redundant. It's, uh, Marsha's, um, explanation, but, uh, I think, uh, I just appreciate the NOS, um, Council to have, uh, this meeting going today and and to have this resolution, uh, be considered. Here, yeah, so, uh, this chair, thank you.
Chair.
Hey. Yeah, I was on mute. Thank you. Is that, um, to, uh, Madam President, Marsha, thank you for, uh, the resolution. It did, uh, could, uh, uh, although, uh, Mister Curly did it, uh, he had the resolution. I I know, uh, Willie Gray's, a little bit of uh, explanation or but so should I, do you have a question?
Oh, shout this out. Good morning. The, um, uh, resolution. I thought we, uh, were supposed to read it into the record. Although we motion on, although in the we have a discussion on it.
On the coffee. Mister Secretary, can you read the resolution to the record, please?
Okay, do you want the whole record or just the heading?
I think Mister Willis, Mister Gay, President Gay requested to read it, uh, supporting the supporting the Shanto chapter, not the heading.
Okay. All right, so a resolution of the NOS, the Regional Council NOS, two thousand twenty-five, zero three nine, zero zero one, supporting the Shanta chapter in exercise of the several, I'm sorry, of itself governance authority under the Title twenty-six and advocate advancing advocating for the protection and strengthening of the chapter governance throughout the NOS region. Uh, should I add too much coffee? All right. Whereas the NOS, Arnold, Jeter, Shonton, and Tapiqin, NOS Regional Council is formally recognized by the Resource and Development Committee of the Navo Nation Council pursuant to legislation R D C zero, R D C oh, dash three eight dash one one, with the authority of advocate for encourage and promote the advancement of regional community projects and initiatives throughout the strategic partnerships with local governance and stakeholders and to the NOS Regional Council is committed to safeguarding and strengthening the sovereign status of itself govern and self-governance of local chapter governance by fostering collective um, support and aligning its efforts with the principles set forth in Title twenty-six of the Navo Nation Code, Title twenty-six, Section one B two, thereby ensuring the empowerment and sustainability of governed local governance. And the Shanta chapter is a certified chapter under Title twenty-six of the Navo Nation Code, granting it explicit authority to manage local governance, including insurance of home site and business site leases, acquisition and management of chapter property and engagement in revenue generating activities. The ability of the the ability, the ability of certified chapters to govern their own affairs and critical for economic development, job creation, and overall well-being of communities within the NOS region. And on and the ongoing challenges faced by the Shanto, Shanta chapter regarding lease negotiations for the hotel property highlight a troubling outreach by the Division of Economic Development, D E D, and other external parties undermining Shanto's local authority and contradicting the intent of the Local Governance Act. And the attempt to strip away the authority of the certified chapters to oversee business site leases and other economic initiatives not only threatens the autonomy of Shanto, but also sets a dangerous precedent that could impact all chapters within the NOS region and the Navo Nation as a whole. And the NOS Regional Council recognizes the sustainable economic development within the region depends on empowering local governance, uh, local governments and to lead initiatives and generate revenue to create jobs and from provide opportunities to their communities. And the closure of and the closure of the major revenue sources such as the Navo General Station, Pibody Coal Mine, have had a severe impact economic consequence consequences on the communities within the NOS region, further in emphasizing the need for the local chapters to take an active role in rebuilding economic stability, the excessive bureaucratic barriers and restrictive policies from central divisions of the Navo Nation Government hinder the ability of the local chapters to efficiently promote effectively promote businesses, business development, discourage investment, and prolong economic stagnation in the NOS region. Now therefore be it resolved that the NOS Regional Council formally supports the Shanto chapter in exercising itself governance under Title twenty-six of the Navo Nation Code and opposes any action that seeks to undermine the this authority. The NOS Regional Council calls on the Resource and Development Committee, R D C, and the Navo Nation Council to reaffirm and protect rights of certified chapters to issue with business site lease and manage local economic development projects. The NOS Regional Council urges the Navo Nation Government, including the Division of Economic Development, to remove bureaucratic barriers that hinder businesses' development within the region and to respect the authority of local governments in making decisions for their communities. The NOS Regional Council advocates for the expansion of economic opportunities across all chapters within the NOS region and calls for stronger investment in infrastructure, business initiatives and self-government initiatives that will benefit the entire region. The NOS Regional Council requests a full review of policies, procedures, and restrict certified chapters that restrict certified chapters from fully exercising their government powers and calls for legislative action to strengthen local governance and economy certification. And hereby certified, the fourth quarter resolution is duly considered by the NOS Regional Council, a duly called meeting within the NOS region at which a quorum was present, and the same was passed by a vote of zero blank in favor, blank opposed and blank abstain on this eighth day of February two thousand twenty-five, motion by, second by, and then signed by President. Chair, resolution has been read into the record of its entirety.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, the resolution. So with that, uh, I'll need a motion.
I'll motion, stop, Willis.
Thank you, Mr. President Willis McGee motions. I'll need a second.
Look at the motion, gray eyes.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Mo, Morgan.
Uh, there was a Mister Willie Gray eyes. I need to say. Pro tip. Willie Gray eyes from another second the motion. Although, the any questions, comments, additions, deletions on this resolution?
Is there a question, uh, Chair?
Oh, a question.
I have a question. My my question is, is there a timeline? That they set on this, um, revocation?
I'll have, um, Madam President, Miss Marsha Gray eyes respond to your question.
Thank you, Chair and Secretary. Um, and, um, Mister Gray Eyes. There is currently no timeline in place. There is still the threat. Um, D E D has not sent us, um, any notification of what our wrongdoing has been, and that's one of the steps that they need to take. Um, what they did was jumped the gun in asking for um, R D C to revoke Shanto's authority, so. Um, they were asked to follow due process in our resolution that we passed yesterday at our special meeting. We did ask for due process because it wasn't followed in. Well, it hasn't been followed until probably now. So whenever D E D files their complaint and sends a copy to Shanto, I guess that's when the wheels begin to turn again. However, in a meeting on Tuesday at Twin Arrows with D E D, they tried to, at at least Director Skolandis tried to find a way to work with, um, both Shanto and with Tony Perry, but Mister Perry wanted to go ahead with, um, taking away Shanto's business site leasing authority and did not seem to be open to working something out. So I guess those are, um, instructions that were put forth to D E D from R D C. Um, and it seems, uh, from there, I guess, it's it's in his ball court to um, file whatever complaint he has against Shanto. And I believe it's going to be on the business manager, not, we're not, you know, uh, Shanto not having a business manager, like a dedicated business manager. So that that's where it sits, and whenever that moves forward on on their end, then R D C will schedule a hearing. And I believe they have thirty days to follow, I mean, to file that, um, complaint. So far, nothing has been done yet.
Okay, thank you. Um. I think maybe language in there should be cited somewhere in good faith. And the Navo Nation Government is supposed to, uh, not tear what has been built locally, but to protect and strengthen and, uh, the the local government initiative.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chanel. But I should tell her for for your response, responding to the the question. And, uh, with that, are there any other questions or comments? I I I'd just like to provide a comment, um. Say, I'd like to say thank you to, um, uh, Chacho, Madam President, Marsha Gray Eyes, although she's a um, Mister Vice President, Mister Black. Yeah, this did in could a resolution here, Katie, uh, it'll be included, um, uh, on the added to our resolution, uh. We we also had other supporting letters that, um, that Shanto community governments receive. I think, uh, Madam President can, uh, think about that a little more than I I can.
Yes, we have. One of the first supporting letters we got was from, um, Tapiqin. Thank you to the officials there. Um, Delard and Clarita. Second one that we received was also, um, I believe from Dinner Chambers. Delard also had a role in that, so. The third one that we received was from Navajo, yes, Tom Reggenbok. And a fourth one that we we got last night was from Senator Hethoffley, Arizona State Senator. And now this would be the the fifth one, supporting our position. So I want to thank NOS Council for, um, helping us with this, and let's see, well, we still have to vote on it, but I'm gonna thank you ahead of time. No, just kidding. No. I was like, um, thank you for hearing us and, um, considering, uh, our resolution here and supporting our position in keeping our business site lease. Leasing authority, I should say.
Thank you, Chacho. Are there any other questions, comments? If there's none, then we'll go to, um, our our vote and the motion. Mister Curly, should that, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Sorry. All right. Can you guys hear me? Okay, cool. All right, this one's the approve the resolution, two thousand twenty-five, day zero three nine, day zero zero one. Um, not just on President Willie Gray Eyes, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, Levon Kinsel, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Old Jito, Willis McGee, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you very much. Thomasina and Tracy, how do you vote?
I'm also in favor.
Thank you very much. Marsha Gray Eyes, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Robert Black, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Roland Smallcany's chair, myself, I do vote in favor. Clarita Black, how do you vote?
I in favor of the of the vote.
Thank you very much. Priscilla Benali, how do you vote? Okay, Jim Sinajini, how do you vote? Thank you very much. With that, Chair, you have a total of nine in favor, zero opposed, with, uh, one abstention, looks like.
Thank you. Mister Secretary, so with the motion carries, nine in favors, opposed, and one abstention. Congratulations. Thank you. I lost for here for the council. Thank you for voting for your votes and your support. And on NOS land, oh, there's, uh, number six adjournment. Time will be ten oh five. Uh, I need a motion.
Motion.
Go ahead and motion.
Can you say your name, please?
Tremantia Tracy.
Okay.
I'll second, Chair.
A second, my Madam President, Marsha. Okay. How do we do this? Do you want to do, um, a roll call vote or just say aye?
Aye.
I was gonna say raise your hand, but we can't do that.
Yeah, we can.
Ready, the roll call vote, uh, please.
Okay, President Willie Gay.
Willie Gray Eyes.
I'm sorry, dang. Uh, my eyes are all cross-eyed over here, sorry. Willie Gray Eyes, how do you vote? Levon Kinsel, how do you vote?
Favor.
Thank you. Willis Gay, how do you vote?
Three.
Thank you. Thomasina Tracy, how do you vote? Okay, Marsha Gray Eyes, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Robert Black, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Roland's chair, myself, I voted in favor. Clarita, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of the vote.
Thank you. Priscilla Benali, how do you vote? Okay, Jim Sinajini, how do you vote? Thank you.
I'm in favor too, Gray Eyes.
Thank you very much. With that, Chair, you have total of zero, nine in favors or opposed with one abstention.
Yeah, thank you. The motion cares to adjourn.
Thank you. Enjoy your Saturday, everyone. Yeah.
Oh. Okay, have a good day, guys. Go on it.
Bye.
Easy on the, easy on the coffee, it's already noon.
Mahomes tomorrow, don't forget.
Oh, yeah, Mahomes all the way.